Hi Carol Anne, how are you?
Hey, good. I'm so sorry. I did not see your email until just now. So I was reviewing on screen sharing. Did you have something that you had to share tonight?
I do not.
Okay.
I don't think so anyhow, but.
Oh, okay. But I'll get familiar with that. I'll talk to Kate about that. And why don't you let me know a time I can call you tomorrow so that we can schedule something to discuss, you know, concerns about the minutes and that kind of thing. Okay. Sounds good.
And I see you do have this recording.
Yes, well, I didn't start, um, did I start the recording?
Well, it did say we were recording and I see the recording icon. What I would recommend is you stop it because anybody who goes to watch the meeting will get 10 hours or 10 minutes of blank screen, you know, 15 minutes before the actual meeting starts.
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, I guess we got that. Kevin, welcome. Ann Blanchard, welcome. And I've got seven o'clock. So I will call the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. We'll call and seating of alternates. I see Ann Kremay is present. Lee Ann Hutchinson is present and I am present is regular members. I know that Steve Nelson is on travel and Scott Person is with the Board of Selectmen for a budget workshop meeting tonight. So we've got two alternates missing. And I see that we have two alternates or we've got two regular members missing. I see we've got two alternates present, Ann Blanchard and Kevin Artisan. And so we will seat both of you for tonight's meeting. Next item is addition or changes to the agenda. And does anybody have any addition or changes that they would like to make? Okay, hearing none, and I have none. We'll stick to the agenda as it's out there. Next item up on the agenda is public comment. And Hank, did you have anything you wanted to share with us tonight?
Uh, no, no, I just logged into here a couple of the scheduled items on the agenda.
Okay, very good. And I see Catherine Hutchinson has joined us now. Did you have any public comment that you wanted to make at this point? And Catherine, I see you're muted. I don't know.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, um, I'm here. No, thank you. I don't. I may later. I don't know whether or not Lee Ann is on. She was having trouble getting in.
She is on as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Jed, can I just interrupt you? The 860 number, could you tell me who that is?
That is Lee Ann Hutchinson. She's on both her computer and by phone.
Very good. Thank you.
Next item is new business, which we have none. So we'll move on to old business. And first up is an update on the gravel pit. Jim, if you got Okay, I have.
Of course, on that. I did have a conversation with Chris Bell late this afternoon. And he indicated that he had grades that were shot by surveyor. He was not doing it himself because of his, um, his leg, his accident. He had the information. He was wanting to go over it with the surveyor before he submitted the written as bill. Um, I did go over, I mean, as some of you may know, that it has been hay and seeded, a portion of the lots has been hay and seed seeded. He ran out of hay. And they're gonna go back in April and finish it up. Um, first, early April. And that's what I have on the gravel pit.
Did you happen to ask him about the topsoil on the rest of the place as well?
I did. He indicated that they would see what came in after the seeding and take care of that as needed. I wasn't thrilled with that, but it was figured I would get to it. Take a look at it as things go on and give them some feedback on that.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can I, this is Hank. Can I ask a question of Jim?
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Hank.
Uh, thank you. Jim, did he mention anything about you? You mentioned that they were gonna come back and do some more hay and seeding in April. Did Chris mention anything about the plantings in the conservation area?
He did.
The juniper plantings?
He did. He said they would take care of those in the spring as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Um, and I, Hank, I meant to give you a call and discuss that. I'm just, I'm going by the plan as, but I can't recall whether there are any changes to that, any verbal changes.
I don't believe so. Um, you know, I just a little nervous about, you know, the timing of, you know, when they, just to make sure they get them in there before, you know, any nesting activities that would occur, you know, say in May, starting May or, you know, mid-May to early May.
Okay, what if I, um, send out a letter to him indicating that's a concern and that we'd like to see him in place by the end of April?
Yeah, that'd be great. I'd appreciate it.
That work?
I can do that.
That'd be great. And April 30th, okay? I mean.
Yeah, that's fine. Yep.
It's May-June, is that your, the turtle?
Yeah, I mean, they generally start moving into the nesting areas. You know, it depends a bit on the weather, but usually mid-May to the peak is early June, the first week, couple of weeks of June. You know, it's variable, but I, you know, knowing, you know, I'd like to have a little bit of a buffer there. So if they could get it done by, you know, the first week of May, that'd be great.
Okay, I'm gonna go the end of April.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions or comments on the gravel pit?
Jim, I'm not sure I caught everything you said. Um, could you pretty much repeat about the maybe part of it, I think, was about the seeding and then something you said they went ahead with something or something that you weren't too happy with?
Um, okay, the hand seeding has been done basically up to a point near, near where the hill, the incline starts where the and they stopped because they ran out of hay.
They ran out of what?
There is, what's that?
And they say they ran out of something?
They ran out of hay.
Hay, okay.
That particular day. So they were gonna come back a little later in the spring, check on everything and finish the hay, hay and seeding. I wasn't thrilled with the topsoil, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna just monitor that and see, see how, how the seed comes in.
Did they agree to have used something else or were you just not expecting? I don't recall. Did they agree to use something else or were you just not expecting the topsoil that they used?
No, the topsoil they used was topsoil that was on, was there originally. I mean, they just basically used what was there. And I mean, their responsibilities to comply with the plan, but, I mean, they were, which is based on restoration of what was there for the most part. So as far as what's there, it's okay. It's lacking in the back towards the hill and on the hill itself. Um, I don't know how they, how they do that, but we're looking at when they finish hanging seeding, take another look at it. That's the way I'm, my approach.
So are you saying that as of now, they're not gonna do that right away until it's warmer and as?
They'll come back first part of April. That's what I understood. They'd become, come back first part of April, yes.
Okay, and then you're gonna check to see if the topsoil seems to be producing results?
Yes. And if they need to add in the back, it'll be added.
Okay, so in the back, do you think they continue to use the topsoil?
I'm sorry?
Or you're saying you'll have a chance to check by then? So if we want them to use some of the material?
Keep an eye and see how the seed comes in. I mean, it should be coming in in April.
Yep, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And also, Jim, weren't we expecting that, you know, towards the back of the lot by the hill, it looked like where they didn't have the hay down, it looks like there was no topsoil back in that area?
Correct. Which is, that's my concern. I'm gonna monitor that.
Yep.
Continue to monitor that.
Oh, just one other question, Jim.
Yes.
Um, about Chris Bell, because he's just had some health issues. Is he, does he seem to be back where he's the primary person being able to oversee this again?
But I don't think he's, he's not doing much fieldwork. I think he said he got up on his walker today. So he's, he's my only contact. Um, I mean, he has had a friend of his do, who's surveyor, do, do the survey work for him. And then he, so he's, he is my contact, yes. He's what I got right now.
Okay, but he's not doing it too well.
I can still contact Bill, the owner, but he, um, I've had better success with Chris, quite honestly.
Okay, well, I think that gives us something to go on. Okay, thanks again.
Thank you.
Anything else on the gravel pit? Okay, we're gonna move on to item 6B, Plan of Conservation and Development. And I guess it was maybe last week, a group of us including, you know, Hank and Elaine Bouchard from the Economic Development Committee, Ann Kremay, Scott Person, myself and Eric Anderson met with the, the two companies that were, you know, that had put in bids to go off and do a plan of conservation and development. At the end of that presentation, John, I forget his last name, from Tai Chi, the company, threw a little curveball out there and said, well, you know, because we had talked about, they had mentioned a consultant planner. And so we talked about that a little bit and evidently, you know, the town of Columbia, their town planner retired last year. And in fact, John is now acting as the planner for the town of Columbia. You know, he was hired by Columbia to essentially be their planner. And that was one of the things I was hoping to, to get a little insight in going through the plan of conservation development process. And so, you know, we talked about that a little bit and essentially, you know, the company Tai Chi would be willing to assist us in just about whatever planning capacity that we might want. And I thought that had a lot of merit to it that we could, you know, do that. The employee wouldn't need any benefits. We could use them as much as they want. My concern would be, do they have enough bandwidth in the company? Because it is a very small company to take us on. But anyhow, so we, the, the group that met thought that Tai Chi would be the best company to help us with the plan of conservation and development. And so tomorrow afternoon, Eric and I are planning on getting together with John again, weather permitting, uh, to investigate more completely, you know, his thought that, well, if we were to possibly hire him as our consultant planner, he could, you know, do the plan of conservation and development out of that, out of that funding, instead of having it be a separate line item. I don't know if there's any pros or cons to that, but I talked to Eric and we thought it would be worth listening to what, what John might want to share with us and see what kind of a deal we could get with, with the goal of establishing a little bit longer, long-term relationship with that company to help us out as opposed to hiring a specific town planner. And I did think that, you know, that company would, would be able to operate as a town planner, keeping the interests of Andover at heart. And one of my concerns with a consultant planner was they'll come in and do exactly what we hire them to do. But we were looking for somebody to be providing a little thought on where we want to take the future of the town and, and working to make that future a reality. And I think Tai Chi might be able to do that. So we'll know more after tomorrow afternoon, but I think, you know, the group was unanimous in the consensus that we should pick Tai Chi for the plan of conservation and development. And now we're gonna go see, you know, if there's anything else we want to consider before we execute, Eric executes that contract. So that's what I know about plan of conservation and development at this point. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them now. Okay, very good. Well, we'll move on to old business 6C, filing extension amended plan for the subdivision known as Korea-Litescka Acres. I don't think we had a name for the subdivision before, so we're, we're making progress, Eric.
Yeah, Andy Bushnell, I think, put that on our plans early on and it stuck, so.
Sounds good.
Yep, I mean, progress maybe in one, in one regard and, you know, obviously because I'm here again, uh, not a whole lot of progress in others, but, um, you know, I, what I can say is I finally have the attention and a work request in with Eversource and their engineering folks. We even, myself and George, who's also on the original subdivision application with me, had a meeting with that engineer at the property on Friday, where I think, you know, it more or less assured, gave me assurances that, like, the plans that we've, you know, submitted that are approved by the commission after the, you know, the request for modification with the new driveway and the, and the utilities entering from the Pine Ridge side, all okay to him. Um, the thing I was really, I keep trying to emphasize is that I'm looking for him to uh, give his right-of-way group, the, the legal department over there, the information that they might need so that my, my attorney can draw up any necessary agreement um, for, for filing with, with, with the town. And it, on Friday, I was told for the first time that they would not be seeking an easement, a right-of-way on my property, which did surprise me a little bit, but, you know, after they explained, they, it's basically because the utilities are going onto my property solely to serve, you know, my household and not to serve anybody else's household. Um, and that is really when, you know, their, their right-of-way is needed to, in case service to another household uh, is interrupted and they need to enter mine, um, they, they would need, you know, access without, without necessarily being granted permission in advance. So I'm just, you know, a few days away from having learned that. I, I, I won't have to do that. I'm looking for something in writing from them to, to really confirm that from that department. But, um, once I have that, you know, I think the, the things that I need, uh, the last few things are basically an agreement between myself and George Korea here and easement in my favor on his part to, for the mutual use of the driveway and my utility, my utilities extending off of his, which goes over his property a little bit too. You know, all of that is reflected in the plan. We, you know, I think my attorney even has everything he needs the, from, from my engineer to draw, draw up a little bit of what's left of that. So I, I don't expect it to be too much longer from now to get the filing done and to comply with the, the conditions of the approval.
Sounds good. Now, I can't remember, Eric, and maybe we didn't have it figured out before because you couldn't get a hold of the utility. Are they gonna dig a ditch through the wetlands to put the utilities or are they gonna run those along your, your driveway abutments there or how, how is that gonna get run across the wetland area?
That, that's actually already complete. Um, you know, if you haven't been over there and, you know, you're interested in the progress, the, the driveway crossing the wetlands is in place and the utilities have been run, the, the vault for the transformer, serving George's property is in place, you know, other telecommunications vaults are there as well. Um, but it, it is in a trench beside the, beside the crossing that was constructed with concrete blocks. Um, it's, it's not inside of it, it is beside it.
Okay, so it's actually in a little trench down through the wetland area there?
That's correct, yep.
Okay, understand. Um, anybody have any questions of Eric while we're here on that topic?
No, this is Jim Howes. I just wanted to note, the, the original modification was approved in August and an extension was subsequently requested and granted. So this would be the second extension and that, that is allowed by statute, up to 270 days being the original 90 days plus two extensions. So this 90-day extension, if, if granted, would be all that the commission can grant, but it sounds like not a problem. Just wanted to give you the background on it. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Moving on to the next item under old businesses, follow-up on the Planning and Zoning Commission role in the proposed senior community center. And at this point, the changes to the regulations that we approved at the last meeting should be effective as of February 7th. Uh, we have not gotten an application yet to do anything as far as the proposed senior community center goes. And, and I think that's, that is really the extent of our role at this point is when, when we get an application, we'll, we'll review it with respect to our regulations. It will be a special permit, so we'll be holding another public hearing. And and go from there. And that's, that's our piece of the pie. I do not, I, I have not really talked to Eric or anybody about any other, you know, meetings or, you know, town meetings or any of that kind of stuff. So I'm not smart on any of that. I was just trying to keep our piece of the pie so that, that we acted smoothly and expeditiously on all that. Are, are there any specific comments on, on what our role is going forward on that?
I have one question. Is that, is it under our purview to about how much parking they have for the community center or how to deal with that shared parking or whatever? Is that part of our permit process?
So it, in our regulations under parking, i- it talks about that that's actually another special permit with another public hearing. And I had expect that we probably process those two things together, but they're two separate items for our regulation.
Okay.
The item we'll have to discuss as a commission is, and it's been a little while since I've looked at all the parking things. But for instance, it had a specified range of parking for a private school. There's nothing in our regulations that provides a range of parking for a public school. And so one, one approach would be, well, you know, we need to put some number in our regulations. Another possibility would be that, you know, we put a bunch of stuff in the regs, for examples, and we use something that's close to that. And if it makes sense to the commission, then that might be okay. So I, we will have to address, you know, and, and that's up to the applicant to come make his case to the commission on, on the parking piece, but we have to deal with the location of the community center, senior center, and we have to decide whether or not the parking that's there is appropriate. And, and so we'll, we'll, we'll be looking at both of those items. Any other questions on, on that? And thanks for bringing that up, Ann. I, it's certainly an extra twist as we go through the process of making sure that it all makes sense. Catherine Hutchinson, did you want to say something?
No, I'm sorry, I just didn't unmute.
Okay, no.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'll do it right now.
Not, not a problem. Okay. Last item there is the Connecticut Bar Association workshop coming up on March 11th. And I know I got my book in the mail a week or so ago. And so if there's anybody that signed up with Jim to attend that and you don't have your book, I'd like to know so we can track down why, why it's not there, but I know Jim and I both got ours very quickly after our form was submitted to attend that.
This is Leanne. I haven't gotten mine. I didn't check my mail today, but I also registered on the last day. So I think that was the 14th, maybe, Jim, but I haven't gotten the, the big book yet.
So you, you, Leanne, entered your information yourself?
No, Jim did it.
Okay, I got you.
And we did get confirmation on that, so they have it. I'll, I'll follow up. Make sure you get it.
Okay, and Jim, I'll let you know if I, if it's in my mail from today that I just didn't see yet.
It's a big.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Catherine Hutchinson.
Yep.
Um, I don't know if anybody is interested that hasn't registered yet, but I just want to let you know I registered today, so they are still taking registrations for it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's a good point. I, I was going to say, yeah, if anybody else, you know, I'd certainly try to register. I don't know as though there's any, any cap on it being Zoom. Obviously, they need, the printer, printer must have had these books ready because they, they were just out, you know, they were out.
And I know that was the concern with the early sign-up is they wanted to be able to make sure they were able to get the books out to everybody.
This is Catherine again. They did tell me that they would send the books out to me forthwith, so.
Okay, excellent.
And, and I'm sorry, I don't know that, if I missed, apologize if I missed this, but the Zoom directions, I believe, were sent out as well. So it's a Zoom sign-in, like, just like our meetings, and they should provide that information. And Jed indicated he had gotten his, so I'm assuming other people.
Well, and, and after you and I had talked about that, Jim, I went back and looked and what I got was an acknowledgement of my registration, but I didn't see Zoom stuff in there, so I think, so I don't think I have the Zoom info yet. I, I was wrong on that.
Okay, well, we'll follow up. I knew we had plenty of time. They seem to be pretty much on, on the case.
Yep. Ann, did you happen to, you didn't see any Zoom information?
Oh, I was just gonna try to look in my emails and see if I have anything, but I don't remember it.
Okay, yeah, I, I thought it was in the acknowledgement of my registration, but it, it was not there.
Yeah, on, on everybody's, everybody's registration was individual and I provided an email for everyone to the Connecticut Bar Association, and they have an office staff, so they have that information. I'm sure, I have to assume they'll be getting it out.
Okay, that's it on, on the workshop. Next item is the approval of minutes of the previous meeting. I told Carol Anne before, you know, the public hearing that that would probably be the most difficult set of minutes that she would attempt to, to work throughout however long she is. Here's our board clerk and and they were certainly, you know, a degree of difficulty more than the routine meeting that we do. There were a bunch of issues that I saw there that, you know, probably how we can work better together as a team to get the right information so that Carol Anne can get them into the minutes and and so at this point, I would like to defer discussing of those minutes until the next meeting. Carol Anne, Jim, and I will get together this Thursday, go through my notes as I review through the minutes. And there's some question whether I was using the most up-to-date version of what she had. She got some initial feedback from me and then made some changes and posted my line, so there's, anyhow, we're not going to review those minutes tonight or review them at the next meeting. And that'll be that. Under the special meeting minutes of February 16th, because Scott Person is at the Board of Selectmen meeting tonight, that leaves only Ann and I to vote on the minutes, which does not give us a quorum. I didn't think it was reasonable to have the alternates vote on that because we didn't record the meeting and, and there was no way that anybody else could see what, what went on there. So as long as we're holding the January meeting in advance to the next meeting, I'd like to do the same thing with the special meeting of February 16th, and in that way, we'll have Scott here to vote on it with Ann and I. Next item is correspondence. Jim, do you have anything in the correspondence that you wanted to go over with?
No, I do not.
Okay. Now, I did send a letter out just before this meeting. Don't know that, if everybody got a chance to see it or not. Periodically, and we're, we're shooting for once a quarter, Eric Anderson and I in the Economic Development Committee get together and try and compare notes on what's going on in the town so that, you know, planning and economic development can work together better. As we've been talking, you know, we got a bunch of good ideas for, you know, things to work on from some students from UConn. There was a thought that we had lots of good ideas already in our plan of conservation and development, our long-term plan, so it wasn't like we were really short on good ideas to go work on. We were short on somebody to go work on them. So Catherine Lewis, you know, after that meeting, she said, you know, the, the Board of Selectmen was meeting the next night, I think, and she was going to go make her case for a town planner and and I think she did. And essentially, what I heard talking to Scott Person was she read through the letter that she ultimately sent to the Board of Selectmen formally requesting a town planner. I, she sent out, she sent out her letter just about the same time that I was providing comments back to her. And so my comments did not get incorporated into the letter that went to the Board of Selectmen. But one of the things I told her was, you know, it was hard for me to endorse a letter to the Board of Selectmen from the Planning and Zoning Commission when I was the only guy on the Planning and Zoning Commission to do anything about the conversation. And and so anyhow, I said I'd bring the letter up. You guys all have it, can take a look at it. Not a lot there. It just formally goes out and says we should have a town planner. I really think it should be a town planner slash economic development coordinator because that's what our plan of conservation, development, long-term plan both call for, but the fact that we are continuing to have more people voice support for getting a town planner, I think is a good thing. How the budget comes out this year, you know, I know it's going to be a tight year for the budget, always is. I'm told that this is going to be even tighter than previous ones. We'll see how that comes into play, but I do think, you know, we, we support an awful lot of other things. It should be reasonable that we have a town planner to help us out. And if that can be part-time through Taikey, I, I wouldn't be opposed to going that route either. I think that would be actually a good route for us to go. So that's the first correspondence. Second correspondence is probably pounding a round peg into a square hole, but I think each of you on the commission got an email from the admin assistant about sexual harassment training. And at least, well, I did complete that training, you know, a week or so ago and I think I could have passed the, the quizzes without doing the training, but that wasn't an option. And, and certainly, you know, the town has had some problems with sexual harassment in the past, so, and it's a state requirement, you know. We on the commissions are now considered town employees, and so we need to comply with the town employee training requirements, of which this is one. So I don't think you can go through the training much faster than about two hours. It's carefully geared to make it take at least two hours because that's what the requirement is. But when you get that done, if you could let me know as well, I'd appreciate it. I'm going to keep track of all the training that the commission members do because we do have this year requirement that we start doing training now. Exactly what that training is, is still a little ambiguous, and so I think we'll probably get, maybe we'll get a pass this year on some of that. I don't know, but certainly if you go to the Connecticut Bar Association training, that would be good. I did attend the clear training that Mark Brants gave on affordable housing and you know, he did a nice job on that. And, and I guess the requirement was it had to have an hour and a half of affordable housing training and that filled the bill. I do know that that session was recorded. I haven't gone anyplace to try to find it, but we'll, we'll pass on more follow, but as, as we see training opportunities come up and you've got the time to take advantage of it, please do let me know so I can keep track and I have to file a report with the Board of Selectmen on how we did. And that's it, that's it on that. Any questions on the sexual harassment training?
Jed, I did not see that come in through my email. I'm not sure who you said sent it.
It was Kate, Jim, is her last name Morrissey?
Yes, uh, yes, I'm not sure that that.
I thought, I thought it went from her person in.
Administrative assistant, I believe would be.
I will, I will send that out to you, Ann. I will send it out to the commission again. And I know Kate asked me for each of your email addresses so that she could send it out, and that's how she would have got that. But I will, I will follow up and, and send, send that email out if I still have it. If not, I'll get Kate to send it out to everybody again.
I appreciate that. I'm not sure if I just missed it, but I did not see that come in, so that would be great. Thank you.
I, I just checked mine. It came on February 7th and it says Kate Morris.
February 7th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Next up is.
Oh, Jed?
Yep.
Hi, it's Leanne. I'm just, I haven't had time to pull up my email now, but it's probably, if Ann found hers, says the same thing, and it seems to me it may have said, I'm not sure how they pronounce the, um, the abbreviation, but it, it's, it's from C-I-R-M-A, I think was in the subject line, if that helps. Like I said, I don't have mine in front.
Yeah, I don't know what, I don't know what that abbreviation stands for either.
That was a CIRMA, is C-I-R-M-A.
Same, it was the one. I thought that's what it was. I didn't open it. I, I figured out that that's probably what it was, but I haven't opened mine yet. I did want to mention that I attended, Jed, the week before you listened to the, the clear uh, segment on the affordable housing. I registered that for that and ended up having to cancel it. I did listen to the one the previous week given by, I think it was Kenneth Slater on meetings themselves, how to run a meeting, decision-making, alternates, things like that. And I took two or three pages of notes. It was very good and I too was interested in listening to the one about affordable housing. And then there was one the previous week that I didn't know about in time to register for, which was, I think, about things like conflict and biases and things like that for members. So if you find, I know there was an email address you could click on, so Jed, if you find anything, you know, either a transcript or, you know, being able to replay it, an audio, I'd be interested in listening to the other two segments.
Okay, yep, I will check that because, you know, after you had pointed out that you attended the second one, I was sorry that I missed it because I thought that would be good, then.
It was, so maybe you can, you know, when you.
I'll, I'll check it out. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Next up, item nine, administrative reports. Jim, zoning enforcement actions or pending applications?
Okay, I did get, receive a preliminary, an application for an accessory apartment, which is not on the agenda tonight because it was unexpected and it wasn't incomplete, but I, I have actually been dealing with, with both the homeowner and the the applicant accessory apartment at the end of aspirin, so you look forward to seeing that receipt in March and hopefully a, a public hearing slated for April. I do have a number of ongoing enforcement actions. Did, we were able to get permits on a project that had been started at 39 Juravady Road. It was a deck and that is, is at least application is, has been submitted, property at 43 Times Farm Road. a pa- application is has been submitted, uh, property at forty-three Times Farm Road. Um, it appears that I got a complaint about a gentleman living in an RV there. Um, I did contact the gentleman who's in charge of the estate of the property, um, and he indicated he would get back to me. Haven't heard from, um, have to follow up on that. Twenty-seven Henney Road, a lot of, um, I don't have a complaint per se, but there's a lot of debris, a lot of garbage. I did send the gentleman a letter. I also expect him to, there's a property, there's a house under construction. It's been under construction since two thousand nineteen, I believe. Um, so at least at this point, I have some leverage on him. Some of some of the the issues are related to construction and others are not. Uh, so now's the time. Yeah, I'm tr- trying to get his attention and I will withhold the C O um at such time as he applies. Uh, sixty-eight Bear Swamp, I had gotten a complaint previously about a RV being used for application that was resolved um fairly recently and um, I was getting a letter out to that effect. Um and a complaint, eighty-seven Merritt Valley Road, sent out a number of letters. The last one was in two nine. Um, and I have reduced, it's it's a landscaping business. It's operating out of the house. Out of, uh, it actually is industrial zone. Um, I'm working with the owner to submit an application. Um, and that'll be, there is actually a way to to permit a home occupation in an industrial zone um, under our regulations. That'll be, hopefully, I will have that application by the next meeting. Um, eleven Bunker Hill, I resolved an issue with asphalt millings on the property. Um, I was concerned it might be in a flood zone and they were removed. Um, two forty-three Long Hill Road, it's an abandoned house, longstanding abandoned house. Um, I haven't taken any action on it because the property was on the market. I was, it was on my understanding that um, it somebody was closing on it. It didn't happen, so I will move ahead and and send out a letter on that. Um, sixty-four Long Hill, longstanding problem with debris on the house that's been under construction for quite some time. Um, at the last meeting, I indicated I was waiting for some direction from Dennis O'Brien, town attorney. Um, where to go, and he had me send out, I did contact him shortly thereafter. And sent a follow-up letter to my original citation letter, which allows, uh, uh, believe, I believe it's a fifteen day appeal period. That appeal period has expired and I will be in contact with with the town attorney this week to see where to go with that. I'm sure that Jill's filing a a notice on the land records. Um, but as far as, I mean, it is incurring, as far as I know, it's incurring, is incurring a daily fine. Twelve Center Street appears to be largely resolved. The uh, house that was demolished, um site has been cleaned up. I'll take another look at that, but I believe it was fenced, the foundation was fenced in. Six sixty-four Route six, ongoing uh, probably problem with Steve Barnett storage junk on property. I've been working with him, meeting with him probably every other week, uh, monitoring some progress. Very slow. Hey. Just, I'm gonna see if I can't make it move a little quicker. Um, it's it's, it is a difficult situation. We did resolve an issue with a uh, somebody living in a trailer there. Three forty-nine Route six, uh, sent out a letter a while back on the lap-laded fence. Um, but which is, this is right next to the to the library, and I've been working with the guy, the owner, and he indicated he has purchased the material and needs will be painting it and installing it as soon as weather allows. And his plan was to paint it prior to installation. I am not sure why, but he probably thought that was better to do and um nonetheless, he's he's been very cooperative getting back to me, and hopefully that will be resolved by the end of April. That's all I have, but I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
I think that sounds like plenty.
Okay, thank you.
I'm concerned that your your enforcement uh role is gonna take every waking hour of your day that you have available.
Most of my time is really spent answering questions and people walk-ins and and question phone, phone calls, so.
Okay, well, yeah, I'm glad to hear that. Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission liaison that uh continues uh well, we'll just say nothing to report. That makes that easy. Things have been very quiet over in the wetland side of the house. We're back to uh public comment. Uh Catherine Hutchinson, I guess you're the only uh public participant uh hanging in there at this point. Do you have anything for us tonight?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Again, um, my interest, of course, is the gravel pit.
Yep.
So thank you very much.
Next meeting is scheduled for March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Meeting will be held uh on Zoom. I don't know uh if uh, you know, how many of you were here when Anne and I were talking uh before the start of the meeting, uh, maybe in April. We'll talk next month about possibly uh starting to meet in person over at the town hall again. At least for the spring and summer months and fall. Um, it's kind of nice when you have threat of a snowstorm and it's dark out that we can be meeting on Zoom and that sort of thing, but uh, I do think it's nice to meet in public now and then too, and maybe we can uh have some of both. But the next meeting's on March twenty-first. Um, Jim listed a miscellaneous item under the uh agenda here, and it talked about the extension of terms for Planning and Zoning Commission, regular and alternate members. And when each of us were elected or in some cases appointed because we were filling vacancies, you uh, you were given a term that expired on June thirtieth of either twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-five. Since uh, since the last election, the state is uh pushed the couple of remaining small towns that were doing elections in May to uh get with the rest of the state and and hold their elections in November, which Andover has chosen to go that route. So uh, instead of voting this May on uh for uh, you know, commission members and and alternates for planning and zoning, the uh the terms have all been extended, so those of us who were going to expire in twenty twenty-three, and that's myself, Anne Creme, Scott Person, Anne Blanchard, and Kevin. Our terms have have all been extended in accordance with the state statute out to November twentieth. And then uh Leanne, Steve, and Susan were all elected in the last cycle, and so their their term will expire in November twentieth, twenty twenty-five. So that's uh, that's all that means. It's just a little adjustment while we shift uh shift our election cycle. And I know it's a little early to be planning for the November election, but uh, you know, if those those of us who are willing to, uh, you know, run again for office, if you could let me know, uh, that way I can start working on uh, making sure that we we keep a full slate for the Planning and Zoning Commission. That's very nice. And I appreciate the support of everybody in there helping us out, so hopefully you'll choose to uh to remain and uh at some point, I'd like to get a couple of the alternates, namely Anne and Kevin, to uh move up as regular members just as soon as possible, then uh, have that go that way too. Any questions on that one?
Uh, this is Jim Halcy. I just wanted to make a note that it in on the agenda, it indicates that the terms expire May in May and and Jed, you indicated they expire in June, which is correct. Um, doesn't substantially change the 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 matter. It just, um, it was an error on my part. So those, the the terms that were scheduled to expire in uh June thirtieth is actually, it's actually correct, not not May.
Yep, and at some point, when the the terms were first extended, they were all extended to the end of the year. And so uh you know, when Jim first mentioned to me that it was eleven twenty, I went back and checked online because we worked hard to get all those dates right initially for everybody and uh and it is eleven twenty and that's consistent. I I checked the, you know, the Board of Selectmen candidates and uh they're all eleven twenty as well, so uh, it just, it wasn't just us.
Yeah, and as a point of information, all the expiration of the terms of all members is listed right on the website, on the on the planning and zoning page, along with the the list of commissioners, just in case you're curi- curious, it's there. Easy to find.
Anybody else have any comments or anything we should talk about under miscellaneous for this evening?
I just noticed the date, the next meeting, I think it's on Monday, it's the twentieth of March.
Okay, um, thank you, Anne. And and Jim, if you, you know, one of the things, uh, so I went to trying to update my calendar with all the budget meetings. You know, and they are all off uh uh on the calendar by a day. It says like Monday, the twenty-first, and it's really the twentieth or something, so all those budget meetings, I think it's on the, you know, they got the day listed, but the date is all inconsistent, so I don't know if they're using last year's calendar when they were putting the dates out or what, um. And and I'm struggling.
Thank you, Anne. I I am I somehow I I seem to do that a lot.
So yes, okay, so the the real date, it's Monday, March twentieth. Thank you, Anne.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Well, thank you all very much for uh for showing up tonight. Uh, again, I uh appreciate the uh, the good attendance and the support and uh we set a record, less than an hour, so uh, that's good. Easy evening for everybody. I appreciate that too. Um, and Carol Anne, we'll see you and Jim Thursday at one, I think we said, to uh to go through uh the meeting minutes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Um, so uh, that's it. Good night, everybody. Have great week.
I'll move to adjourn at seven fifty-six.
Thank you, Lee. Thank you, Leanne. Um details, details, yep. Okay, thank you, Anne. Uh, anybody, anybody opposed? Hearing none. The motion passes five zero zero to adjourn. Thanks for keeping me honest, Leanne. Good night, everybody, and thanks for the great support.
Thanks, Jed.
Right.
Bye.